Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of July 13, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Saul Gonzalez from Lifehouse Church to offer the invocation. Pastor has been so active in a lot of the outreach to our community. I just really appreciate all that you've done with your church. Following the invocation, we have just a few drillers in the house. And tonight, we have the special honor of having the CIF Central Section Division III Baseball Champions, our Bakersfield High School Drillers. And they will be leading us in our pledge of allegiance. And then I'll come down and we'll talk a little bit more. But what a pleasure it is to have this wonderful group. They beat three other teams, Taft, Minachi, and Kingsbury to play the final game against Hanford. And starting pitcher Wyatt Cade threw seven innings, allowing only three hits for the shutout victory. So congratulations, Pastor. Come on up. Would you all please stand?
Gracious Father, we're so grateful for the opportunity that you give us to have men and women, staff, council members at the helm. Your Word says that when the righteous govern, the city is at peace, its people prosper. And so we just thank you that righteousness takes you into consideration, your word and your counsel, your wisdom, direction, favor, strength, courage, wisdom. And so we just thank you that this council will enjoy, and its staff, and all its, our city friends and workers. Thank you for this audience, that everyone would just feel that invoking your name and calling upon your presence to bring about direction and wisdom, especially Solomonic wisdom, how do we save the baby, the project, what's important, in spite of the different challenges and vicissitudes. And we thank you for this. Thank you for your presence and leading, and your blessing through Christ Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Can you just come up to the microphone and lead us in the pledge?
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the resiliency and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Drillers stay right up there.
Always a driller.
Are there any drillers in the house?
Yeah.
Well, we are so, so delighted to have you all here today. Congratulations to your team. We don't get to do this very often. You can give us a bit of the history, Coach. And so today, it's my honor to be able to present this on behalf of the City of Bakersfield. Congratulations to the Bakersfield High School Baseball Team, CIF Central Section Division III Baseball Championship. So, thank you so much, and congratulations, Coach Mario.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure to present this to you, and then also this on behalf of the City of Bakersfield. Feel free to introduce your team, and parents, anyone else.
All right. Well, thank you very much. A little bit of the history. It has been 52 years since the drillers have been, well, have won a Valley Championship game. And it's been 28 years since they competed in the Valley Championship game. So, we're very honored, we're blessed. It's just awesome having these guys. So I'm going to go ahead and start with our catcher, Nolan Arnold, who's right there on the end. We have Efren Singh, Braden Ornalis, Johnny Lee, Wyatt Ash, Luke Mazarros. And something that Mayor Go forgot to say was, our Wyatt Cade, the winner of the Valley Championship game, is a freshman. So Wyatt Cade, God, we call him Welzy. I'm drawing a blank. Hudson Wells, Hudson Wells, Elijah Gonzalez, and we did not leave out our Bat Boy Hunter Cade, which is Wyatt Cade's younger brother. And again, this is my head assistant right here, Chuck Blair, and my other assistant, Garrett English. So, thanks, guys.
And while they're coming up, if you are a parent, a grandparent, or a friend of these drillers, would you wave your hands? Well, I think it's just our entire crowd. Thank you to all of you. All right, let's see. We might have to do two rows, what do you think? Do two rows?
Yeah.
Sort of know, you know which I'd ask along in the front row. Want to do a special shout out to Adam Elvidres, like premier fan who contacted me about this, but I already knew we were going to do this. So thank you all, parents, thank you. You're welcome to stay here and watch the meeting, or go on and continue your celebration. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 4A, proclamation to Rick Anthony, Director of Recreation and Parks, declaring July 2022 as Recreation and Parks Month in Bakersfield.
Well, I don't know. It's a little difficult to follow this, except, are you a driller?
No.
No, okay. Well, we are so delighted to have Rick Anthony and our special friend James here, who I see almost every Saturday. James Enriquez, serving with John Enriquez, his brother, who is appointee to keep Bakersfield beautiful, but he brings all his brothers out, and we clean Saturday after Saturday, and I'm sure many other days you get to go out there. Department of Recreation and Parks provides that special, special time for connection and interaction that's just fundamental to our well-being. They're responsible for just a few parks, like 61 public parks, four public pools, 10 spray parks, two sports complexes, two skate parks, and one large amphitheater. So it is an honor to celebrate to the 257 Recreation and Parks Department staff for their continued commitment to our community. And today, it's my honor to be able to present this proclamation. Why don't you come on up here? Whereas recreation programs and parks are essential to communities across America, including the City of Bakersfield, and whereas parks and recreation are fundamental in establishing and maintaining our community's quality of life while contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community, and whereas recreation is invaluable to residents in providing positive alternatives for children and youth, especially during non-school hours, whereas parks and green spaces remove pollution from the air, lower city temperatures, and aid in capturing and storing water. Now therefore, I, Karen K. Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim July 2020 as Recreation and Parks Month in our city, and urge all residents to enjoy the social, physical, mental, environmental, and community benefits derived from the city's parks, streetscapes, and programs. It's my honor to be able to present this to Rick Anthony, Director of Recreation and Parks. Mr. Anthony?
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Go and council members. This morning, I was greeted with one of those positive emails from the City Manager's office that actually wanted to acknowledge one of our workers. And this lady did not know the worker's name. She just knows she visits this park every morning, and there was a hard-working individual there, dedicated every day. So we tracked them down, and I'm happy to share this moment with Mr. James Enriquez. He personifies what our Rec and Parks Department is about. So thank you again.
Thank you.
We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons. And as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
In keeping with the council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card. Give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item is not on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards. However, we have provided the council with an email from Mr. Jonathan Ekren that was shared by Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received five speaker cards this evening. The first speaker is Dick Taylor.
Welcome, Mr. Taylor. Would you just wait until our guests are seated, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome.
I felt outnumbered being at East High Blade here a few minutes ago. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Dick Taylor, and I'm here tonight as a trustee of Historic Union Cemetery to thank the city and to make a request. So I'll get on with the thanks first. I want to thank council members Arias and Gonzalez for some assistance they provided Historic Union Cemetery, as well as city staff as well, and the Bakersfield Police Department Chief Terry and Assistant Chief Stratton helped us with a number of safety and security issues that have been ongoing. Union Cemetery, historically, it goes back to 1872, the namesake of our city. Colonel Thomas Baker is interred there, as well as a ton of other names you would recognize, Mr. Chester, Mr. Brundage, Mr. Jewett, and a lot of others. I could go on and on. But I would also request to see if there's a possibility, and I'm certainly not trying to put anybody on the spot, I know we can't respond anyway, but we're looking for some assistance, maybe in the form of possibly a grant or some special funding for additional security. We used some that was loaned by the police department back in the fall, and it was, knocked it out of the ballpark. And I want to thank Councilman Arias and the police department for that. Our clients were super happy about it. I won't go into the details of it, but what used to be off-limits with regard to people doing things to cemeteries isn't off-limits anymore. So it's sad to see. Large piece of property, big footprint, 80 acres of beautiful manicured lawns and shady trees. So again, I wanted to thank the city for your help and attention, and I would like to perhaps at some point in time have a conversation about some additional assistance for us.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for your comments. Thank you for communicating with me this morning, and I'm glad you're here today. I also want to thank you and all the trustees for all the work that you do, being good.
Thank you. It's an honor to do it.
Well, you're very good caretakers of our cemetery, and it's certainly, as you pointed out, a historic and sacred property, and it's a very special place for many families, and my family included. My grandparents are there, and so it's a very important place to our community, and it's important that we preserve it. Councilmember Arias has done a great job advocating on the cemetery's behalf, and I'd like to continue that now that it's in War II. So I'd like to ask staff that we work with Mr. Taylor and with Union Cemetery to address their security needs, see what opportunities might exist for us to preserve this historic site. And also, I'm going to add to this referral and include that we look at potential traffic calming interventions within the area surrounding the cemetery, because the speed at which people drive through is outrageous. And so it's important for us to address all those things at the same time. Thank you again.
Thank you. And in spite of common belief that I was born then, we have, because I wasn't, we have veterans that go back from the Civil War back that are interred at our cemetery. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Next speaker, please.
Griselda Hurtado.
Good afternoon. I want to thank everybody, the city council members, for allowing us to be here today. My name is Griselda Hurtado, and I am the association manager with Union Cemetery. I'm extra nervous. But what I can tell you guys, that Union Cemetery is a big part of our community. We help the community, from lowest income to anybody that needs our help. And we're there to continue the heritage, to continue the history. And by us continuing the history, that means that we can continue to help all of our community. I can tell you that Councilmember Arias, along with Councilmember Gonzalez, has helped us tremendously throughout the years. Just recently, we attempted to apply for a grant. It was the EOA, correct me if I'm wrong, or am I right? Unfortunately, we weren't able to qualify. We are a 501(c)(13) nonprofit organization. We are in a thin line. We don't qualify for certain things. But if we were able to qualify for any type of grants, we would highly appreciate it. On behalf of our trustees, and Mr. Taylor, Mr. Franconi, and so on, we appreciate any kind of security help that we would be able to get.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hurtado.
Thank you.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Griselda, and Mr. Taylor. You guys are champions there at the cemetery, and it's been an honor to work with you guys on many different issues, both good and bad. But, you know, we're very thankful to have two tremendous leaders there every single day, protecting that site, the over 80 acres. That's a huge footprint in southeast Bakersfield, and we're looking forward to continuing that partnership and make sure that, you know, Union Cemetery is here to stay and in a safe way. So actually, we'd like to ask the city manager, what are the opportunities for, you know, 501(c)(13)'s, other organizations? In my head, I'm also thinking about church organizations, which there are many, in southeast Bakersfield, who find themselves facing the same challenges that a small business or a business would, but aren't necessarily eligible for some of this funding. Can you help me think through that and, you know, think about what we can potentially do as a city to help support them?
Councilmember, and Mayor and council, we have designed our Economic Opportunity Area Grants to be based off of the concept or philosophy that there would be a tax increment increase that would benefit that overall area. And so it was initially identified that would, you know, primarily be to the benefit of private enterprise. We've made some adjustments over time that for, you know, certain public good, that some other entities had been eligible, but the full spectrum of nonprofit, or church, or other community-based organizations have not been eligible for Economic Opportunity Area Grants historically. We have some CDBG-funded programs in those census tracts that can benefit some of these smaller entities, but they're fairly limited. We don't have many programs that are designed to specifically address safety concerns or redevelopment opportunities, you know, for entities like that. And so I think really frankly, at this stage, we haven't adopted programs that provide funding for those purposes.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Then I'll make the ask tonight that, you know, staff, potentially Paul and his team, get in contact with Mr. Taylor and Ms. Hurtado, and look into opportunities. I don't know if that's expanding the EOA program and building on what exists already, or looking at potentially a new program to help support them. I think, you know, through our economic development strategies, there is a lot of emphasis on bringing in new businesses and new developments, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're protecting what's already here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Dick, maybe you could give me a call at the office tomorrow or sometime? Maybe there's some strategies that we can work out that help you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And now, next speaker, please.
Carla Correio.
Please introduce yourself. You might pull the mic a little closer.
Hello, council members. I am Carla Correio. I am a Master of Public Health student at the Public Health... Let me begin. I... Let me restart. Okay. I am Carla Correio, a Master of Public Health student at the Keg School of Medicine at USC. I was raised and grew up in east Bakersfield, and during my formative years, I saw how firsthand policies at the local, state, national level affected my community directly. I'm here today to implore you all to adopt the tobacco retailer policy. A tobacco retail policy license will help ensure that tobacco retailers are compliant with local, state, and federal laws, such as the illegal sale of commercial tobaccos to youth. In a case study conducted by the Public Health Law Center and American Lung Association, the TRL has led to remarkable declines in youth purchase rates in commercial tobacco purchases. Although the TRL has helped reduce youth purchase rates in those jurisdictions, Bakersfield is one of those who has not adopted this policy. In respect to health equity, the tobacco industry has a history of targeting Latino and Black communities, which has resulted in high use of commercial tobacco use. I've analyzed and collected data on tobacco retailers here in Bakersfield and found that approximately 104 tobacco retailers are located within 1,000 feet of schools, daycares, youth organizations, parks, museums, and libraries. This leaves youth at an increased risk of exposure initiation, experimentation, and ultimately becoming addicted to tobacco products. A TRL provision that limits the proximity of retailers to these youth-sensitive areas would protect school youth at all ages. This is an equitable solution that reduces and ultimately eliminates the disparities of health and its determinants that adversely affect marginalized groups. With that being said, it is in your best interest to adopt the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Correio.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Samiva Casillas.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, I just want to be respectful of the last speaker. Ms. Correio, thank you so much for your comments. I'm sure the next speaker has similar comments, but just to clarify, Mr. Clegg has actually moved out of Safe Neighborhoods Committee and is coming back to the full council in an upcoming meeting. Can you give us more details?
Correct, council member. The committee had provided a motion for staff to bring several options back to the council for how tobacco enforcement could be systematically done on a citywide basis, given a little extra homework to provide additional options coming out of committee. We anticipate at one of our August meetings coming back to council with some of those options.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Samira Casillas. You may all not recognize me, but I've actually spoken here before on a very similar topic, if not the same. So I hope that serves as a token of proof of how much I and the youth of Ward 1 and 7 care about a TRL in the City of Bakersfield. There are many arguments against a TRL, and while I would never want to be dismissive of someone's concerns, I would like to respectfully address them. I know that there are those who believe that waiting on the state's SB 793 bill is the best way to address youth smoking and vaping in our community. I think that the key word here is waiting. Why wait to address a problem that we know has been affecting the youth of our community for far too long now? It has affected me, my family, my friends. I have young cousins on their way to middle school, and I already know what they're going to experience. They're going to go to the bathroom and realize that the door is locked because the administration is trying to prevent students from smoking or vaping in them. They're going to be offered some sort of vape or tobacco product, and this can be anywhere, during class, on the bus home. I know this because I've experienced this, and just a few years behind me, so has my little brother. We've had this problem for more than long enough, and waiting will only prolong it. We must act now, act now, before more people, especially our youth, become addicted. The tobacco industry has already spent $21 million in their effort to overturn California's law, SB 793. And if they were to be successful, where would that leave us? A TRL is sustainable, evidence-based, and has been proven to work for many communities. So please, let it work for ours, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casillas. Next speaker, please.
Bernardo Ochoa.
My name is Bernardo Ochoa, the Chair for Tobacco-Free Kern. So as you saw, we have... So as you saw, we have the community here and our youth that is waiting for a response from the council. We have provided information packets. And with that, we will like to get information, and we would like to really get a feedback from the council to really see what's the stance and what's the direction for the tobacco retail license in our community. You know, because we all don't... Most of us don't like smoke, and especially us that have asthma and are passionate about asthma. That's a concern for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Just layering in on Councilmember Gonzalez's comments. So this went to a city committee, and we talked about this item. So in the processes, we took it out of committee, and now it's going to come back to the council. And, Mr. Clegg, you said approximately when again?
We anticipate one of our August meetings.
So in August, you know, if you want to come back, we should have something where we're going to discuss a possible ordinance for that. And if we can have staff maybe contact whoever the lead is there, so when we do do it, have a firm date that they're contacted.
We can do that, Councilmember. They have been in communication with us related to this topic in the committee meeting. We have their contact info.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Thank you all for speaking. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Marygo, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments Item 6A. Two appointments, Ward 1 alternate member and Ward 7 alternate member to Youth Commission to complete a term to expire July 31, 2024. Two applications for appointment have been received from Natalie Tarango and Ivan Tran.
Thank you. We'll just wait a minute for everybody. And thank you all for joining us and participating in the process tonight. These appointments are by ward, therefore no ballots are required. I'll call first on Councilmember Arias for the Ward 1 nomination, and then Councilmember Parlier for the Ward 7 nomination of the alternate Youth Commission members. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor tonight to nominate Natalie Tarango as the alternate member for representing Ward 1 on the Bakersfield Youth Commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Ivan Tran. Is Ivan out here? So real quick, just to mention Ivan, just an outstanding student at Ridgeview High School. Ivan has managed clothing donations for victims of the French Fire, organized book drives, coordinated fundraisers for pediatric trauma prevention programs, and he plans to be an emergency room physician.
Thank you. And Ms. Tarango is a junior at Golden Valley High School, a 4.33 GPA swim team, interact club, and an outstanding student with a strong determination to accomplish her goals. Vice Mayor?
I move approval of the nominations.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And we thank both of those appointees for their willingness to serve on the commission. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 7A through 7AO for approval.
Thanks. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have one item to be pulled for separate consideration, and that is Item 7F. And so I will make the motion to approve Items 7A through 7AO, with the exception of Item 7F.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, 7F. Councilmember Gray.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wanting to bring this to the public's attention because some of these things just go through. But we're very thrilled to put into place a shopping cart ordinance if this is approved tonight because we're trying to prevent the blight that we're seeing, the public hazard of abandoned shopping carts all over the city in roadways and so forth. I know everybody... Every one of us have encountered those. And so with the shopping cart ordinance, I think we're going to be able to start pulling these off the streets and making a difference. I know the Bakersfield PD is thrilled that we're going to be able to get some of them off the streets. So with that, though, as a businesswoman, I've spoke about this before, but I think it's worth noting now that we have a plan in place that we are going to have a subsidy program for businesses to put this in place and make sure that we are not passing ordinances on the back of small business. It's going to be more of a challenge for them than helping. Of course, those shopping carts not being able to get stolen is going to be saving money right there for the businesses. But anyway, as we put this together as a committee and speaking with our city attorney and all, we all came up with the plan that we felt if we were going to put this ordinance in place, that we needed to give our businesses some help. So with that, I would like to call on the city manager where he can go into that a little bit more detail so business understands tonight that we're helping them, we're not hurting them.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor and Council, some highlights on this. And if I miss any key points, I'll ask our Community and Economic Development Director, Paul Saldana, to fill in any gaps that I may leave. This incentive program is designed to provide reimbursement grants to all property owners who are required to come into compliance under this ordinance. We did want to take into account that some properties are larger and some are smaller. We want to make sure we take care of our small and medium local businesses, but there's also opportunities for larger retailers, larger property owners. But this program is scaled so that based on the number of shopping carts or the size of the system that someone might need to put into place, that they would have grant funds available to them. And on average, it will roughly be about 50% of the costs to implement these systems will be a one-time grant to help get these into place. We feel like that's a fairly generous opportunity to help get these property owners and retailers into compliance with the ordinances. And as noted, we think there's long-term benefits for them from a cost-benefit standpoint, and we're able to help with this upfront amounts. The grants will range from $2,500 all the way up to $20,000 for single properties. And those that come together in joint efforts could see a slightly larger amount, up to $25,000. We've done the homework. We know that there are 115 different shopping centers throughout this large city. And based on the range of the sizes of those different shopping centers, we will be able to set aside the funds to make sure that everyone over this next six months has the opportunity to get that funding assistance, to get those systems in place, benefit their own businesses, and really benefit the community from the removal of that blight.
Thank you, City Manager Clegg.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 7F.
You have a motion? Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. Mr. Clegg, so if I read the program description correctly, this is run through the Economic Opportunity Area Program?
Thank you, Councilmember. There's actually three different ways that the funding can be applied. And so I appreciate the question for those interested business owners. I think the real key is contact our Economic Development Department, and we'll get you to the right place. For those that are in Economic Opportunity Areas, that's one eligibility. We actually... For those who aren't in those areas, we're going to have other funding sources that fund this. Because we hadn't pre-appropriated dollars towards this program, it was a way to identify funding from both Economic Opportunity Areas, our American Rescue Plan Act dollars, and our general funds. So we're actually funding it from three different locations, but we don't want to complicate it for our businesses. Just know that contact our Community Economic Development Department. It'll be a form and a process very similar to what our Economic Opportunity Area forms are, and we'll get folks taken care of.
Thank you for that. Here's my concern. In the EOA program guidelines, there is a restriction that a property owner cannot apply for funding more than once within a given certain period of time. I do not want this application to preclude them from making other improvements to their property that might in fact enhance their property and provide economic incentives for their benefit, particularly if they're in a underserved or disadvantaged neighborhood. So I want us to make sure that that caveat is clear.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. The program that's before you is a separate program, and it's a standalone program using the EOA as a funding source. And so that's why the program guidelines are designed the way they are, so that it doesn't conflict with businesses that may have received an EOA in the past. So it was specifically designed in that regard.
Okay. So I'm going to be painfully clear. And I apologize, but I just kind of anticipate future questions. If, you know, Andre's Grocery Store applies for funding through this program for shopping carts, and I receive $15,000, I can then apply for an EOA grant? You're telling me I can apply for an EOA grant in the future?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm perfectly fine. Thank you.
Okay, you have a motion? Please cast your votes. Did everyone vote?
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 12A, New Business. Council Consideration and Direction to Staff Concerning Proposed Ordinance Prohibiting Unlawful Possession of Catalytic Converters in the City. Support of State Legislation Addressing Catalytic Converter Threat/Thefts and/or Monitoring Local Ordnances and State Legislation Until a Future Date.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Council. Deputy City Attorney Ashley Zombrono will be making the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, I'm going to be talking with you about catalytic converters. As I'm sure everyone in the room knows, the issue of catalytic converter theft is a huge issue, not just in the city of Bakersfield, but also nationwide, statewide, and the city of Bakersfield. So just to start off, a background for anyone who's unfamiliar. Catalytic converter is part of a vehicle exhaust system. It contains several precious metals, including platinum, palladium, and rhodium, each of which have a very high value. Skilled thieves can remove them in a matter of minutes, sometimes as fast as 60 to 90 seconds. This makes it very difficult to catch someone in the act of stealing them. They also typically are not imprinted with a VIN or other identifying information. And this means that it's also difficult to trace the catalytic converters or track them to a particular victim or lawful owner. This issue was actually made as a referral from Councilmember Arias at the April 6, 2022 City Council meeting. At that meeting, the referral was made for this issue to come before the Safe Neighborhoods Committee and consider the issue of catalytic converters and possibly a local catalytic converter ordinance, specifically with a reference to one that had recently been adopted by the city of Artesia. The city attorney's office brought this item forward for the Safe Neighborhoods Committee meeting on June 16. And the committee ultimately decided, in a 2-0 vote, with Councilmember Parlier absent, to bring forward the proposed ordinance for full council consideration at tonight's meeting. So at the Safe Neighborhoods Committee meeting, which I should mention, the memo that was presented to the committee at that meeting was also included in your agenda packet this evening. And there was an overview, a discussion of a handful of ordinances that have been adopted by some cities in the city, in the state of California. Specifically, the city attorney's office reviewed ordinances that were adopted by the cities of Artesia, Irvine, Lake Forest, and the city of Carlsbad. Each of those ordinances are nearly identical in substance and were newly adopted between November of 2021 and April of 2022. So they're fairly new to the books. Also, at the Safe Neighborhoods Committee meeting, there was... The chief of police was also present, as well as members of the Bakersfield Police Department. It was a positive discussion in which we also talked about efforts to date to address the issue here in the city, including some local public events that BPD has sponsored or coordinated to help etch VIN numbers on catalytic converters, among other efforts. Now, ultimately, because of the newness of the ordinances, as well as some pending state legislation on the issue, which I will address shortly, the city attorney's office and the chief of police actually recommended to take a wait-and-see approach. However, the committee voted to bring the full issue before the council for consideration. So what do the local ordinances really do? There's sort of a main component, which is that it's unlawful for any person to possess a catalytic converter that is not attached to a vehicle unless a person has valid proof of lawful possession. The ordinance then goes on to define what is valid proof. So it's defined to include, for example, a bill of sale from the prior owner with photographs or other valid documentation that's specified in the ordinance. There is a draft proposed ordinance mirrored off of the city of Artesia's that was also included in your agenda packet this evening. Now, failure to properly prove lawful possession would violate the ordinance and is a misdemeanor. So there's just a few things that I'd like to highlight about a local ordinance and specifically clarify. So a violation of the ordinance would mean that there's no proof of lawful possession. It does not necessarily mean that it's proof of theft or proof that it is stolen property. The ordinance, in my opinion, attempts to fill a gap between industry requirements that currently exist or the lack thereof and effective criminal prosecution. But because the ordinances are very new, the effectiveness at assisting local law enforcement and criminal prosecution is unknown at this time. Following the committee's direction, we did go back and do some more in-depth research. So I also wanted to note that, based on our review, none of the top 10 cities or our survey cities appear to have adopted a local catalytic converter ordinance to date. So we did a little bit more research to kind of understand perhaps why that's the case. And so one of the things that I'd like to also highlight for you this evening is just a sampling of the significant state legislation that has been introduced to date. So you'll see on the screen here, it's very detailed. It's small font. Some of these bills have actually already failed. But just to give you an idea that there are a lot of bills that have been introduced this legislative session to try to address specifically this issue. And many of these bills come at it from a variety of perspectives. Based on review, there are a handful of bills, though, out of those that I just had on that prior screen, which have been introduced by a top 10 city and/or have support from District Attorneys Association and police chiefs that appear to have traction in the legislature right now. Specifically, those bills are SB 1087, SB 986, and AB 2682. Collectively, those bills, they impose statewide requirements on the sale of used catalytic converters, for example, defining who can become authorized sellers of them, requiring certain traceable payments, et cetera. But also would require new vehicle catalytic converters to be printed with the VIN starting in 2024. So, you know, that's, I think, positive news because that would really address the gap that currently exists with being able to identify lawful owners and also potential victims when they're stolen. And just to note, the legislative session does end August 31. So in roughly about 45 days, we will know if these bills did in fact pass and are before the governor for signature. The governor will have until September 30 to sign or veto that legislation. So there's a few options before the council this evening. And as noted in the admin report that was included in your packet, you can make a motion to direct staff to continue monitoring the legislation monitoring the legislation on the issue of catalytic converters and report back to council. Of course, you can also direct staff to bring back proposed ordinance for first reading at the next meeting, which would be August 17. Or, and/or, you can direct staff to bring back a proposed resolution in support of state legislation on the issue of catalytic converters. These options aren't necessarily mutually exclusive. Not listed on here, of course, in your direction to staff, you could also, you know, direct the Bakersfield Police Department to continue its community efforts with, you know, etching and other types of things that might be helpful to the community as well. With that, you know, if there's any questions, those are the options before you this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Zombrodo. Anything further, City Attorney?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start by saying that I was inspired tonight by a young lady named Samira, who was before our council today, and she posed the question, why wait? We have significant legislation that's pending in the state legislature. I appreciate Ms. Zombrodo laying out the number of bills that are before our California state legislators, but the challenge is, why wait? Today, tomorrow, each day is an opportunity for these thieves to continue to do what they're doing and to continue to steal these catalytic converters. And there is a hole right now in our legal system where we do not have the opportunity to prosecute individuals who steal these items in minutes. It's nearly impossible for our local law enforcement to get there in time and to reprimand them in that moment. And so what this would do is create an opportunity for our local law enforcement to work together after the fact. Say they, you know, pull somebody over for another violation, and they happen to see in that vehicle that there are multiple detached catalytic converters that are clearly not their own, this would give them another tool in the toolbag to go ahead and do that enforcement and hold them accountable. I think that, you know, this idea that, you know, hey, maybe it hasn't been successful yet, I think is a little premature. I think, you know, cities like Artesia, I talked to the mayor this morning, it's just too soon to say whether or not this is actually successful, but I think the moment to act is actually now. I actually took many phone calls about this this morning, but one of the good conversations that I had was with the district attorney, Ms. Cynthia Zimmer. We had a very positive conversation, and we recognized that, you know, when someone gets their catalytic converter stolen, it's a local issue. The person who stole that catalytic converter is a local person oftentimes, and when they're looking for help, they're looking for their local elected officials. And so I think that, you know, it's our responsibility and it's incumbent upon us to take action, and I think this is not going to necessarily fix the problem entirely, but I think it's one step in the right direction. And I actually want to read a statement from Ms. Zimmer. She said, "The theft of catalytic converters is running rampant in the city of Bakersfield and in all areas of Kern County. The Bakersfield City Council's act in passing an ordinance prohibiting the theft and possession of stolen catalytic converters is a positive step in sending a clear message to thieves that they will be held accountable for their crimes that affect our local residents from all walks of life." We continue to have a conversation after the fact because we recognize that putting a law on the books is one thing, and making sure that it is enforced, and we have the appropriate staff and resources to do that enforcement, has to be a component of that. And we are eager, as soon as we pass this ordinance, as should council want to do that, to have those conversations about how we continue to do targeted and selective enforcement of this ordinance. With that, I want to make a motion tonight to adopt the catalytic converter ordinance, and then in addition, also identify with staff the common sense measures that are coming out of Sacramento to support those as well.
Mayor, just for clarification, I think your motion, Councilmember Arias, would be to send it for first reading. It hasn't had that yet, so it's, that would be first reading then on August 17. If you could make that amendment to your ordinance, to your motion, please.
That's okay with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor. I understand staff being cautious on this, and normally I'd be in total agreement and say that's the prudent thing to do. I know most of us up here know at least one owner of a dealership, and if you haven't had an opportunity to take a look at it, we received the correspondence from the president of the Greater Bakersfield New Dealers Association, and they're in a tough spot. They have had approximately, in June, just after lots with all the dealerships, 18 dealerships, about 100 catalytic converter thefts. President of the association, Honda dealership, the last two weeks, they've lost nine, one out of the front lot and eight out of the back lot. I talked to one of the principals today with BMW, they lost 11 just out of their BMW dealership, and they said, not only is it catalytic converter theft, you know, take that vehicle out of sales, it takes it out of sales for approximately three months. They also have carrying costs of about $500 a month because they can't sell that vehicle. New catalytic converters are on back order, and it takes three to four months to get those in, and it costs about $3,000 to $4,000 for a BMW to replace that catalytic converter. You know, I wish Sacramento was moving quicker, and is this a perfect ordinance? Probably not, but I assume to be ahead of the curve than behind it in this case, and I think we need to support the dealerships, you know, first and second quarter, quarter in, quarter out. They are the number one or number two tax producer for the city of Bakersfield, and I think it's important to try and protect the golden goose if all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Parlier's comments. I, too, have received feedback from a few auto dealerships today, those that actually exist in Ward 2, and they are very much in support of this ordinance. I would point out that actually the city of Bakersfield is a victim of catalytic converter thefts. Many of our city vehicles actually have had catalytic converters stolen, and so it is a pervasive issue in the community. You know, I hear about it from all over Ward 2, and enough is enough. We have to take a response, and sitting on our hands and waiting for Sacramento is not a good response. It's not good enough for me. And so I support the motion by Councilmember Arias, and my hope is that we can move forward and continue to drill down on this issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, all of us want to solve the problem, and we all want to, but we all want to solve it in a way that's effective and really does happen. So one question I had, Councilman Arias, was your discussions with Cindy Zimmer. Did she say she will prosecute? When we bring these to her, she will prosecute them all the way through, as opposed to, you know, so many things now saying, nah, we don't have any prison space, so I'm not going to prosecute them anyway. So the question is, we don't want to have to spend all this time and then have her say, no, I'm not going to prosecute them. Your comment sounded like she said she was, but I'm going to kind of hear from you. What did she, did she say she said, I'm going to prosecute all these people?
Yeah. I hope I don't put her in a spot and have her call me after this, but she shared with me that her team is actively pursuing and prosecuting these misdemeanor charges already, but that's only as good as their capacity is currently. And so I, you know, this reminds me of the situation with 911 dispatch where, you know, we worked with Kern Behavioral Health to place clinicians in 911 dispatch so that we can get the resources and staffing that we need for our city residents. And so it's only as good as her capacity allows her to, but I think there's certainly opportunities for improvement.
But she isn't hung up on this issue of, you know, we can't, we can't really prove that just because they have it in the backseat that they stole it. That isn't something she says that she's concerned about, that I can't really prosecute because I can't really prove they stole it.
So, two things. One, she actually shared with me that there's a particular device, some type of saw, I forget the name of the saw, that a lot of these guys are using when they're stealing these catalytic converters, and the way in which you utilize that saw makes it very clear that it wasn't a professional who did this. And so they actually utilize that evidence and that distinction oftentimes in the court of law, and they have been successful in the past in identifying which ones were indeed stolen and not just went into the auto shop for traditional repairs. The other thing, too, is, I can't speak for her fully, but the challenges with actually putting somebody behind bars for the charge that they're charged with, it's across the board, right? It's not just because, you know, this particular case is related to catalytic converters, it's related to, you know, robberies, burglaries, and all other types of crime, and that inability to put them behind bars, I don't think should stop us from taking action within our own jurisdiction.
Well, okay, and it's, there's not going to be, there's no perfect law, and we know, we've enterprise, there are concerns about, you know, can we really put them in jail? On the, so there's a question mark there, but a lot of times up here, we've been frustrated that we never err on the side of aggressiveness because we're afraid we'll make a mistake in passing ordinances, and I'm sympathetic to that. I'm also sympathetic that, well, maybe just getting arrested and getting all the way to the prison, and they might say, I don't have room for you, teaches them a little bit of a lesson, and maybe, I know, this is just me, this is clearly not what a person with police expertise would say, that, yeah, you know, if we lessen the converter and we find some heroin in the backseat, well, all of a sudden, we really can't prosecute them because that's fruit of the poisonous tree or whatever, you know, it's illegal search, we didn't have probable cause. On the other hand, we never would have known they had heroin in the backseat, and now we know some guys we can tag and start monitoring who are criminals. So on the other hand, there's some new information, even if we couldn't get the guy on it. So, well, one other point, so, you know, even though I know it's not perfect, I'm leaning towards being aggressive, but I was wondering, is there any way we can, I don't know if it's a modification to the motion, if we can align our ordinance with the state ordinance, I don't think, or ordinances that are eventually passed on this, that part of ours is, once that happens, we will modify our language and ordinance to be parallel with, inconsistent with state law, because I think we're going to want to do that anyway. Just saying, I don't want to wait, it might take them six months, I understand that, but when that happens, we don't want two conflicting sets of laws, and if part of your motion could ensued, and we will conform ours to the state laws if and when they're passed on this. Yeah, go ahead.
Great point, that it was something that I was thinking about. In fact, I would like to accept and modify my motion so that if there is a piece of California state legislation that relates to the penalty associated with having multiple detached catalytic converters in individuals' possession, then I ask that we include language in the ordinance tonight that includes a sunset provision, should that state legislation pass, if it equals the penalty or is above what we're currently doing tonight.
City Attorney, do you have a comment on that?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really understand the direction. The state legislation isn't, whatever the state legislation is on the penalty will be the state legislation on the penalty. Ours would be, if anything, less. So my, if that's really what the council wants to do, I understand the direction. I would tell you that if and when the state passes legislation, we, staff, can certainly come back to you and tell you or suggest to you ways in which to amend the ordinance and add whatever provisions you want or whatever provisions you don't want. I would tell you that that's a much cleaner way of doing it than the vagueness in which the direction was given.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Then that's totally fine. We can ask staff to bring back this ordinance, should state legislation pass in the coming years, and amend the motion to make it consistent. Thanks.
Councilmember Freeman, do you have anything further?
My question is, what the actual language of the motion is. Do we, do we just leave that? I know this may just be window dressing, but it would be nice if the ordinance included and if and when the state passes legislation, that it will be brought back to council to conform with our local ordinance, just so we close the loop on what we're saying.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we don't usually codify that language in the code.
No, not specifics, just saying you'd bring it back.
I will definitely bring it back. Without a doubt, I'll put it in the administrative report, but I won't put it in the ordinance itself, the law that actually gets codified in the blue book. Staff will bring it back.
Okay.
Actually, still on probation, so if she doesn't bring it back in six months, that's an easy way to take care of it. We are going to bring it back. We are going to track it. You have my word.
All right. Good enough.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you. What my concern is, because I've heard some hesitation tonight in your presentation from the Bakersfield PD, from our chief, that they're more leaning towards a wait-and-see, and I hear some hesitation here and staff also a little bit. So I just want to clarify, why, why would the, for the public's sake and my sake, why would Bakersfield PD want to wait and see rather than jumping on this opportunity of passing this ordinance?
Mayor, Councilmember Gray, I'll pass the baton over to Assistant Chief Stratton, but I would tell you that part of our, part of our reasoning for waiting to see is that we do think that there are some legal issues associated with this ordinance which may cause some greater problems down the road. As Councilmember Arias has indicated, the DEA is already prosecuting catalytic theft converters, so theft, so she doesn't need this, she doesn't need this particular ordinance to do her job. She's already doing her job. And I will then pass the baton over to Chief Stratton to see if he can further answer your question.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. We are just definitely a little bit concerned about the overall constitutionality as it relates to imparting laws like this. It's a little bit concerning to be out on the front end of something that we've not seen in any other places. We have a great deal of confidence in the investigations and the number of arrests that have been made. We have seen excellent partnership from the district attorney's office, from the district attorney who has been prosecuting these cases. We've seen numerous people who have been arrested for catalytic converter thefts that have been taken to jail for possession of stolen property, for possession of burglary tools, for possessing the saws that Councilmember Arias was talking about. We've been able to make arrests for conspiracy and for a variety of different offenses, but we do see a little bit of issues as it relates to the possession of stolen property and determining and confirming that it is, in fact, stolen. Just because someone is in possession from it, of it, doesn't necessarily mean that they're the ones that stole it. So not 100% certain that the ordinance in and of itself will be able to help prevent these, as we believe we already have a tremendous amount of laws on the books that are helping us in that regard. So there's definitely some concern of being out in front of it, but I, I think that we have done the best that we've been able to do to make the arrests, and like I said, the district attorney's office is prosecuting them, and people are being sentenced to jail, and the justice system is taking its path from there. We do believe that we focused our efforts on intervention and prevention, working with the auto dealers and a variety of different businesses, on being able to find ways to educate the public on how they can prevent this crime from occurring in the first place. But I think that kind of sums up a little bit about where we are in our position.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Gray, anything further?
Do you feel that by passing an ordinance like this would give us extra teeth? Do you think that it will make a difference from Bakersfield PD's stand?
I don't think that, I, I think that this is already an illegal act, and I don't know that an extra ordinance is going to stop a thief from committing the crimes that we had talked about. I think that the laws of possession of stolen property, the laws of grand theft are already on the books, and we're seeing that it's still been rampant. I don't know that this ordinance is going to change or impact that.
Okay.
The ability of, in my opinion, the state to be able to hold on to those that we're arresting and sentencing for those crimes is a much bigger issue than the ordinance.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Need to correct things in Sacramento, there's no doubt about it. I am also the victim of a stolen catalytic converter, but my concern is that we do put unnecessary constitutional risk on our city when there is already laws on the books that you're able to take care of the situation. So, I would make a motion that we would wait, not because I wanna continue to see lawlessness in Bakersfield, but I believe that you all are already addressing the issue, and then I would also, along with that, as Ashley suggested, encourage Bakersfield PD to continue to work with the auto mall, to do the etching that they're doing on catalytic converters, and we have till when? The end of August before we're gonna find out what the state is gonna do? I think before pulling that trigger, that's six weeks from now, I think my motion is to wait until the state decides what they're gonna do, and then, and, and keep the Bakersfield PD engaged with the auto mall to reduce constitutional risk to the city, especially since we're not seeing the outcome from other cities, or the, the 10 largest cities don't even have an ordinance like this in place, as far as my understanding.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. While you're there, could you, we're, we're talking about penalties and arrests and all these things that could come from this ordinance, but the reality is, what? You arrest somebody? You take them to the jail? I mean, what is that like? Because my understanding is, they're gonna be out in about eight to 10 hours anyway, so, and they'll be back on the street stealing more catalytic converters. So, you give me a picture of what goes on when you arrest somebody, what happens, and what's the end result?
Yes, sir. The reality is that with some of the laws, that this is not a violent crime, it's a property crime. It's an unfortunate crime, it's very costly to our community, to our businesses, and to our citizens. It's something that we take seriously, it's something that we take reports on, that we have detectives that are assigned to, that we're making arrests on and follow up on because we understand the impact that it has. The reality is that we can't control what happens in the state, but we can control what happens at the Bakersfield Police Department, and the Bakersfield Police Department is dedicated to protecting the lives and property of the people that we serve, and that means investigating these crimes, and when appropriate, taking people to jail for it. Unfortunately, that's almost the extent of where the Bakersfield Police Department's involvement lies. At that point, we step back and the district attorney's office moves forward, and we have a great partnership with the district attorney's office who prosecutes these, these criminals. However, due to sentencing issues, due to jail availability, the fact of the matter is, those who are arrested for property crimes are out in a matter of hours, and they're not being held, and a misdemeanor ordinance or a felony ordinance isn't gonna change how much time they stay in custody until we have some additional changes in bed space availability that's made, and the state has some changes in who they're willing to accept to state prison. When those changes are made, people will be able to be held accountable, especially as it relates to those that are committing quality of life and property-related crimes. So, the unfortunate reality is that we've made arrests multiple times of multiple people for multiple offenses of catalytic converter theft, and they are out in a matter of hours, if not a matter of a day or two. And that's the unfortunate reality where we are, and it's, it's frustrating to make an arrest of somebody who has several of these catalytic converter thefts, or these catalytic converters, only to see them out, again, and arresting them for the same offense and the same offense, and it's not, it's not anecdotal, especially with this type of an offense, it is a serial repeat offender that, generally, that we're seeing.
Thank you. I understand your frustration, and isn't, doesn't this code that we're about to pass, doesn't it automatically make it a crime if you stop and you have a catalytic converter in the back of your car?
That is my understanding of reading.
Maybe the city attorney could address that.
It's my understanding that reading through it, that that's a portion of what the intent is, is to automatically make it, make it a crime, if you're there. I would tell you that already, though, with the laws that are on the books, if we pull somebody over and there's catalytic converters in the back of the car, and we're, we're seeing these type of things that are there, and we're seeing other evidence, the saws and other evidence that's leading us towards this, there's a variety of different legal processes that we're gonna follow, possibly to include writing a search warrant to be able to, to seize that evidence and conduct follow-up investigation in a traditional sense that comports with the Fourth Amendment and comports with the, the legal standards, to be able to effectively seize that and prosecute, and leave us in a good position to make sure that we're, we're following the, the processes outlined in, in the state law and in the Constitution. So, that would be the, the process that we would go. I'll defer to those with more legal expertise than I, as it relates to, you know, what this could potentially do to be in conflict with the Fourth Amendment, but I do believe that there is, it's a little cloudy as it gets towards that, and I think there's, that's likely why we haven't seen it enacted in, in some of the other, other cities.
So, it sounds like you've got a very hands-on type process that you're using right now.
I believe that we have a process that allows us to be effective whenever we're able to identify those who are committing the offense, thanks to the foresight of the council and PSVS and with additional resources that's gonna allow additional visibility, additional efforts to be able to increase our capabilities as we get to that point, as we get closer to complement. We do believe that having that high visibility out there deters crime in the first place, you know, with the things that have been passed in the last budget, being able to have data and data-driven technologies to help be, us to identify hotspots in where we're directing our patrols and using the ShotSpot or Connect data that's coming in to help direct where our officers are patrolling. It's our hope that we're gonna continue to intervene and prevent these offenses from occurring in the first place, but when we do come across them, we do feel very confident in our abilities to be able to make and affect the arrests. I'm, I'm obviously not out there every day, our officers are, but I'm unaware of any instances where we're coming across catalytic converters and not sure whether they're stolen and unable to make an arrest for the offenses that are occurring at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir. Mr. Gennaro, give me a timeline, so, if we pass something tonight, what's the timeline that it would actually go into effect?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we're council, if Councilmember Arias's motion passes, that would be sending it, sending this ordinance to first reading, which would be on August 17th, so we would have first reading on August 17th, assuming it received a majority vote on August 17th, it would go for second reading on August 31st, assuming it received a majority vote on August 31st, it would go into effect 30 days later, so on September, on September 30th, September 31st, it would go into effect.
So, September 30th, we'll know what the state has done?
Yes, sir, you should know by then how many bills are on the governor's desk, if any.
Okay. And Ashley, I'm sorry to hear you're on parole, but, so, it, it seems like we're piling on at this point, we've got a good opportunity to wait, the state does what the state does, and if we have other needs that the state didn't provide, we can address those when we know what the state has provided, and I don't, I don't think there's a need to rush in at this time. I, I feel sorry for the car dealers, I, I know they're, they're hurting, and we're, I don't know that this law is gonna change any of that, and I also have been the victim of catalytic converter theft twice. I know it, it's, it's pain, but I don't see how voting on this tonight is gonna change anything that's gonna happen in the, through September 30th, and September 30th will have what the state wants, and we know what we can do from there, so we will walk forward. So, I'm in support of Councilmember Gray's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Freeman.
Once again, to get clarification, from what I'm hearing, if we pass this ordinance, you're not gonna do anything different than what you're doing today already. If you think you have a good case, you're gonna pursue it, if you don't, you're not, you're gonna evaluate each case, you're not gonna start pulling more people over than you would have, using the same judgment that you've always used or currently using regarding, you know, pursuing people for stealing catalytic converters. Is, is that right, or am I wrong about that?
You're correct, sir.
Okay, that, so, nothing, so in a sense, we're only doing, we're, a lot of pressure from the public, we're doing it, they want us to do something, they wanna read the paper and hear that we did something. It's a little hard if it's, to support, if absolutely nothing is really gonna change, and from what I'm hearing, nothing is really gonna change. I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a real downside and a big risk, I don't know where the constitutional risk is, you're not gonna pursue something you don't think's gonna hold up anyway, so you're, you're already the filter on that, but it's July, whatever it is, 13th, whatever, is that what the day is? You know, to, to wait two and a half months to get some clarification, if we even need a local ordinance, if the state passes a law, you know, that doesn't seem to be that long, and I hate to do something, even though I know the public wants to read we did something, if we do something, that it won't make any difference, that in the end, I don't think that's the way to go, so, I'm, I'm sort of leaning towards, Councilperson Gray, the more, well, let's wait, let's wait and see, let's monitor, let's help, whatever mitigation measures we have out there or can encourage about etching or catalytic converters to prevent it, some mitigation for, you know, a month and a half or two, until we get some clarification, and if Sacramento doesn't act, then I'm definitely gonna be in favor of a local ordinance, and maybe we can wordsmith it better to address some of the legal issues, but I guess that's kind of where I'm at, as a good discussion, I appreciate all the information you provided and the back and forth, this, this is what we're supposed to do up here, is get clear, so, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna be clear that the Bakersfield Police Department, Chief Terry and his team, and Chief Stratton have done a tremendous job with enforcing, you know, some of these types of thefts, pursuing them on an ongoing basis, and I, I understand that it can be really frustrating, interacting and interfacing with the same individuals over and over and over and over, but until the state takes action on some criminal justice reform, this frankly is the reality that we are living in, but not having answers to all of the questions, I don't think should stop us from taking action that we can take. And I, I wanna be clear that in my conversation with DA Cynthia Zimmer, there is a functional purpose for this action tonight. In fact, she shared with me that although they are pursuing cases related to catalytic converter thefts, that this act at the local level would be helpful because there is a void at the state level. There is no ordinance in the penal code throughout the state of California that addresses catalytic converter thefts, and so what this would do is create that ordinance at the local level, and, you know, would be helpful in terms of prosecuting. Now, will they stay behind bars for very long? Again, that's a question that the state has to address, but it is within the realm of what we can do, and it will be helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a problem for a long, long time, and the, the lack of ability to keep people in jail is been a problem now for too long also, but to just not do something doesn't work for me. I think, you know, we need to do what we can do and move forward, and if the state does pass something in September, we can certainly come back and, and change our ordinance and, and make it match, or, or, or get rid of our ordinance if the state then takes better control, but we should do something at this point, is what I feel like. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo a comment that Councilmember Freeman made just a moment ago, in that there is really no perfect law, and there is really no perfect ordinance, and it's very difficult for us to see the outcomes of any ordinance that we adopt here. I mean, just recently, we adopted the shopping cart ordinance. We, we really don't know if that's gonna be effective, and frankly, I have doubts that it will eliminate all shopping carts. I think any reasonable person would, can understand that it's not, that not one ordinance is the panacea for a single problem, that there will still be issues that exist, but again, to, to do nothing is, is, I think, more problematic for me, because our constituents elected us to find solutions to the problems facing our community, and if this, for me, this is just one additional tool that we can experiment with, and, you know, frankly, my direction to city manager and to the, to the chief is to utilize this ordinance and to be creative into figuring out how we can actually make this ordinance effective, how we can utilize this in new ways, and then also to bring back new recommendations, because I don't wanna stop here. You know, let's, let's continue down this road and, and look, look for additional enforcement mechanisms, additional ordinances, that we can, you know, strengthen the rules here in the city of Bakersfield, because we all know that things are getting out of hand, and it's up to us to provide some leadership and to push the envelope a bit. I'm not concerned of what happens in any other city, my job is as a city councilman in Bakersfield, and so I think we need to get this done tonight, and we need to keep going.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, just to recap a couple things, so, GTAs, grand theft autos.
Yes, sir.
Is that a revolving door now sometimes, too?
Yes, sir. We've had plenty of conversations regarding some of the, the issues at, with some of the dealers, yes, sir.
But we still enforce GTAs, correct?
Yes, sir.
Aggressively?
Yes, sir.
Organized retail crime, we just had a meeting at the mall recently regarding that, it's become a big problem, there was local news.
Yes, sir.
I believe it was channel, oh, I won't say the channel, but, one of the local news stations just did a story on it, and that's still a problem, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's still a revolving door with some of those arrests, too?
Yes, sir.
And some of those venture into the felony category also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so a catalytic converter costing, what I got from BMW, $3,000 to $4,000 for a replacement, would that fall into a felony level?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we're talking about a misdemeanor ordinance, and in the toolbox of law enforcement, you have big tools, and you have some small tools, and you have some little tools, this wouldn't be considered one of the big tools, but what did you add that it is a tool in the toolbox? If that's.
Maybe, maybe there's a hypothetical where, I'm not gonna discount the fact that there could be a hypothetical where it, it could be, I can't see an instance where we would utilize the ordinance and not the penal code, so much to your scenario of grand theft auto or grand theft or any of those things, we don't have an ordinance about grand theft auto, and we don't have an ordinance about shoplifting because the penal code covers those.
Right, but there's no specific penal code regarding catalytic converters, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And this would be potentially a tool or a stopgap until Sacramento figures out what they're doing?
Like I said, I don't want to discount the possibility that there's a hypothetical situation where it could be. I can't think of a scenario where you'd come across a catalytic converter that you suspect of being stolen and you wouldn't utilize the penal code of possession of stolen property or grand theft and you'd instead utilize the municipal code or the code. Maybe there is and I'm just not thinking of one. I can't think of a scenario where that would...
Okay. I'm going to take that as a possible maybe.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Well, the Bakersfield City Council, since I've been on it for the last eight years, has tried to be a law enforcement or law and order, is I think is a better term, a law and order council and law and order community. You know, we want to make sure our people are protected.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know how many times we've, you know, talked about the disadvantages of Sacramento and the slowness of Sacramento.
Yes, sir.
And not the, the law and order attributes that we would like to see coming out of Sacramento. In fact, we have the reverse coming. So, looking historically at what Sacramento's been doing lately, I don't know if something had come out in September or November or August. I don't know when. I think it's all pie in the sky until that happens. So, I'm in support of Eric's motion. I think back to Margaret Thatcher, you know, when she was talking to the first George Bush and she said, "Don't go wobbly in the knees." I think this is one of those times that we have to go back to our roots and we are a community that wants to protect its citizens. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Vice Mayor.
Well, I can tell you for sure that nobody sitting at this dais is going to go home having done nothing. It is our job to sit up here and consider what is best for the city of Bakersfield. And we have discussions and we have conversations, but we're going to go home after voting our preference. And after the dust settles, Chief Stratton's going to go about his business and nothing's going to change. Absolutely nothing. Except we will have an ordinance on the books that is not really a good ordinance. It's not going to protect anybody. It's not going to save any catalytic converter thefts. We're already doing it. So, why put something in the code that we don't need, that you're not going to use and it's, it's just not useful? And I don't want to do that. When I go home tonight, I will have done something. It may not be what everybody on this council wants, but I will have done something. And we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Anyone else? Councilmember Gray.
Well, I would totally agree with you, Ken, because there's not one of us here that is not pro-law enforcement. I have been the victim of two trucks being stolen and one utility trailer from our business in the last year and a half. So I definitely want to see law enforcement. But you have explained very well as to what you're already doing with the laws that are on the books. I want to go back to the constitutionality of this and I want to bring our city attorney into the conversation of where she feels that the risk is because we really haven't talked about that tonight. And there's not one of us here that doesn't want to do nothing. And I agree with my colleague that we are doing something here tonight. But we want to make sure that as bringing forth an ordinance, that we are protecting our city, too, from unnecessary lawsuits if this ordinance, she feels, could put us at risk. So, could you explain that to us, please?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Gray, you know, I've been doing this job for a long time and it's, it's always a sensitive issue when a council member asks me to explore that item of potential litigation in a public setting because, of course, I certainly do not want to provide the legal means for another individual to sue us on a constitutional, unconstitutional grounds. So, suffice it to say that the major concern with this template ordinance is that it, in my mind, it really bypasses probable cause. One can be picked up for a misdemeanor because one is in possession of a detached catalytic converter. Period. End of discussion. If one cannot prove that they have lawful possession of it, the police, the police officer may cite you, may arrest you, may take you to jail as a misdemeanor because you are unable to prove that you are the rightful owner. That is really contrary to pretty much everything in what we've been taught as attorneys. And I think that's one of the reasons why you don't see more of these template ordinances around the state of California. And again, many of the legislations, legislative bills that are in front of the legislature right now try to bypass that probable cause and that reasonable suspicion. So, that would be the answer to my question without going too far down the rabbit hole.
Okay. So, you're pretty much telling in simple terms, you're saying if somebody's pulled over with a detached catalytic converter in their backseat and that they are pretty much guilty instead of proven innocent, instead of innocent until proven guilty?
Yes, that's a, Councilmember Gray, that's one way of stating it. You can take it a little bit further because we have had these cases before where a prosecution of a local code, our ordinance, ends up going before the District Attorney's Office. And while Chief Stratton is correct, we have a wonderful partnership with the DA. There are many situations where a case is dismissed in the interest of justice. And when that happens, guess what? On a civil rights situation, that then turns back against the citizens of Bakersfield as a civil rights matter and we then have to defend it. And if we lose because the ordinance is unconstitutional or it was an unauthorized arrest, we will be on the hook for attorney's fees and nominal damages.
Okay. So that is my concern and I agree with my colleague, Ken, Vice Mayor, that we don't need to be rushing into this right now because people are being prosecuted. You've got to catch them before you can prosecute them anyway, right? It's not like it's going to change the fact that you're not going to catch anymore if we put this ordinance in place or we don't put this ordinance in place. When you can catch them, you're going to arrest them. So, to be speeding through this thing, which could create more problems for us down the road, as our city attorney has just explained, that is my concern. So, we are doing something in this city. We are bringing to light that we do have a problem. But once August 31st rolls around, that's, to me, the time that if, if the state doesn't take any action, then we need to revisit this, but not go off of a templated ordinance, as you called it, but really put some thought into it to where it's well done and it's something that can really be, you know, an attribute to the police department, you know, an advantage rather than a disadvantage. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. I don't see any other requests to speak. Thank you, Chief Stratton. So you have a motion. We'll vote on Councilmember Gray's motion, which was second. Please catch your votes.
Motion fails with Councilmember Arias, Councilmember Gonzalez, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Parlier voting no.
Thank you. And so now you have a motion from Councilmember Arias. Please catch your votes.
Motion passes with Vice Mayor Weir and Councilmembers Freeman and Gray voting no.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make a couple of referrals tonight to the Budget and Finance Committee. We have spoken a lot about two project ideas in the city, but wanted to see them come into fruition through the Budget and Finance Committee. Number one being the vacant property purchase program and number two, the nuisance property purchase program. This is the rehab program. I understand, you know, as I've continued to do more research, that there are some nuances that we need to consider and would like the Budget and Finance Committee to address those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Any other requests to speak? Seeing none, the meeting stands adjourned at 6:57.